Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for August 14th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and will be available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:05. First item on the agenda, public hearing continued, New England Realty Ventures LLC, application for an AFRFER Protection Special Permit, Site Plan Review Permit, and a Special Permit at 74 Main Street. We did receive a letter from the applicant requesting that we continue.
Before you take that up, Mr. Chairman, in your packet for your information, I do have my comment letters, so you can take a look at those until the next meeting. But there is one item in there that I am recommending that we have a traffic consultant take a look at the traffic situation at the project, since that's a priority concern for the town and, you know, there were issues historically with that issue. So, in your packet is also an agreement from Agreement Pedersen, Inc., that I'd like you to authorize me to recommend that the administrator sign the agreement so that we can have them review. I did send the agreement to the applicant and they're aware of it and they're okay with the scope.
Okay, with it, okay. Any questions? Do you want to form a vote on that, Bill?
By consensus or by vote, doesn't matter.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, I have no problem with that. Definitely not. It's a area of...
All right, go ahead with that, Bill.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to continue.
Yeah, unless Bill has anything else?
Nope.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for New England Realty Ventures LLC to September 11th at...
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, move on to our next item.
Can we do Discussion Item 1?
Okay. Discussion Item 1, Proposed Zoning Map Amendments.
In your packet, you have a memo slash letter or something along those lines, if I can find it. I'm digging deep.
Can you cut out the bottom of the pile?
What happened to our iPads?
There it is. We're back to the paper.
Oh, geez.
No, that's for a later item. Looks like this.
All right, let's see what we got here.
We've got some bold font in there, and then we've got some tiny, tiny facts.
I got it, yeah.
Okay. So, I think we have Deb Blaine here from GBI to speak to this.
Okay. So, what's in here, huh?
I have more copies anyways.
Oh, here's some bold.
Generally, the request is to consider... They're providing a couple of examples of what's called a lakeside residential zone, and they're giving some sample language from Webster and Monterey, Massachusetts.
Okay.
And it would apply to any lot that borders a body of water having 50 feet of frontage on the lake or on a way, or was in existence before 1970. And then, those letters are A to G, talk about dimensional requirements. And the logic is, and I'll read it, "This zone would alleviate hardship for many residents who own undersized lots that abut the waterfront. The undersized lots in existence before 1970 would qualify to be built upon without zoning relief. Many lots would qualify to be built upon, thus increasing the tax base of the town." So, they're asking that we... Well, they're going through CMRPC. They're proposing that we use CMRPC, but that's beyond the scope of what we currently have an agreement with them for.
Right.
So, I would imagine if we did modify the scope, it would cost us some money, or we could do it ourselves, in-house.
Okay.
Can we find out the extra cost?
We can.
Yeah, have we maxed out that CMRPC cost?
Yeah, that took into account last year's and this year's hours, yes.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly...
Find out what our cost might be, just for giggles, and we'll decide from there.
Okay.
Whether to go with them guys or we kind of look at it and go from there, too.
Okay. Deb, did you want to add anything?
Yes, I do, thank you. So...
Two examples.
Hello, so here I made a copy for each one of you, and it gives you some examples of what we've been finding, and I do a lot of permits, applications for other towns. So, what I've been finding, and the other towns have a new district or have a district that's added on into their zoning called Lakefront Zoning District or Lakeside Residential Zone. And what it does is it addresses the numerous lots that were built upon that border the water. And I picked... We got over seven lakes or ponds in Douglas with similar situations, cottages being built on the lake, people are trying to go for reconstruction, they're having to go in front of zoning, it's creating a hardship, not everybody's getting approved. And I picked six of the best lots that I found on our zoning map that are very, very similar to what these other towns are doing. Webster has this lakefront zoning district, and so does Monterey. Those are the only two that I know off the top of my head that have plans addressing these lots. A lot of these lots in town have no frontage, they have just right-of-ways over two points in the rez and that type of thing. So, while the town was addressing rezoning, I thought it'd be a good idea to look at what other towns are doing in those areas along the water. And it would increase our tax base, and it would help generate some more tax dollars coming in to our assessor's office if we could address these properties and make it a little bit easier for people who own these lots to reconstruct or build on them.
How are they zoned now?
They're all different.
Yeah.
They're all different, yeah.
Pretty much RA.
Oh, you've got Cottage Colony, that's smaller, you've got everything along the rez, you've got Manchard Pond, you've got Bad Luck, you've got Wallem Lake, they all had small individual...
But they're all RA.
I'm kind of confused over that.
I have an extra...
Oh, sure.
It's all from the 70s.
No, I know. I live on one of them, so I have no frontage, so per se. Now I have frontage, but I don't.
Right, and I think, I don't know if it happened many, many years ago, but a lot of these homes have their frontage on the lake. So, whether they were using... And in the definition, the real estate definition says that frontage is any right-of-way including a body of water. So, I don't know if back, way, way, way back, if they were assuming that their frontage was... And most of their houses face the lake, so that's their frontage. So, when you find that the rez, a couple of the ones that I'm showing you pictures of, they absolutely have all their frontage on the lake.
On the lake.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would help out a lot of people. I mean, we've got over 100 of these properties. There's a lot of properties that would fall into this district, so it would just be in those areas.
Okay, yeah.
And then, of course, they wouldn't be able to get a building permit until they went through Board of Health. Webster says no permit for building shall be issued until a disposal works construction permit has been obtained. So, I mean, they would still have to go through the regular channels, but that would alleviate them having to go for special relief.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, certainly worth looking into, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a question for you. Your thing says that you need... This applies to 50 feet or more.
That's what Webster does. Webster has special lakefront districts, has 50 feet of frontage, but most of these people would have at least 50 on the water. A lot of our lots around the rez and Cottage Colony only have 20 feet of frontage on a right-of-way, but then they've got frontage on the water.
There are a lot of lakeside cottage things, places there.
Frontage from a zoning standpoint on the water is not really frontage, but it's just...
It could be, because you can transport the water.
Well, if you change the definition, the traditional definition of frontage is not, I don't think, is water, you know, frontage.
In the real estate book, it is frontage, it does have a water as frontage.
Well, it is public access and proprietary rights, but that's not specifically frontage. We can define it however you want.
Right, well Monterey, if you look at one of the last pages...
Well, if you're an island, yeah.
If you look at one of the last, I think it's the third page from the end, Monterey's definition of frontage, and I've highlighted it in red, it's the third one from the back. Monterey, if the parcel has any water frontage on one of our lakes or ponds, it is assigned to the lake or pond. So, that's how they've defined their frontage on their lakes.
Right, any town through town meeting can define, or otherwise define frontage as being whatever it is. I mean, you can just make definitions and agree to it.
All right, well, we can certainly take a look at the discussions at future meetings, and we'll be in touch.
I'll get the stuff from CMRPC, I'll share it with you.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
See you later.
To me, there are a lot of them that are less than 50 feet. What about...
We have our little pads.
They would have some...
Computer pads.
Water.
Authorization.
I think they would have 50 feet on...
Moving the agenda now. Ready, board?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, 7:05. A&R Plan Lucky Dan Properties LLC, 63 Cedar Street. Just give you a naming address for the...
Rob Schurrier, live on Cold Bird Street in Douglas, and representing Lucky Dan Properties here tonight for an A&R Plan on Cedar Street and Route 16. Yeah, it's basically has frontage on Route 16 and Cedar Street, so basically we're just putting one line through the property here, which this would be a residential lot, and this is conforming to an RC2 lot.
Bill, any questions?
No. You just added that note, though.
Yeah.
You're saying here...
Room Cedar and 16 Alley. Where's... What way? Because right there is the bridge, right? On that one?
On 16, west, right there. This is where it goes Wallem Lake.
Oh, going that way?
Yeah, the bridge is over there.
Okay, you're out on the other side.
This is the one.
Okay, good.
Yep.
They're good.
Is there a drawing in here at all? Is it a bridge?
Yeah, there is.
The bridge is there.
This is the bridge, going across. You can see the house here.
Yep.
House here.
Looks like this.
That's where you're going, okay.
Form A on the front, yeah.
I know where that...
When were the wetlands flagged?
Building by recently.
Okay, is there information on those? I thought it was a little bit bigger based on when they did the roadway.
We're not approving the wetlands, but access, limiting.
Unless it was along the front of the access.
Correct.
Right.
There's a pull-off, I think.
Maybe you're showing the wetland flagging, so...
There's a gravel drive right there.
Yeah, I know, I'm familiar with the property.
Oh, okay.
There's like a gully that goes to, drops off, and there's a gully... No, over here. It's right here.
Cedar Street.
But I thought the water was traveling through there.
Okay, so if you're going on 16, take a left onto Cedar.
Not that I'm aware of.
Going towards Webster.
Was the date of the flagging?
Right, back to a wall.
It was recently, probably back in July.
Is this 16?
Yeah.
And this goes up to where?
Beginning of June, beginning of July.
That's the bridge.
This is the pond, right here.
That's right.
This is the pond, what was it?
Whatever. This little smoothly stuff is the pond.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A&R for Lucky Dan Properties LLC for 63 Cedar Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries.
Thanks.
You have a Mylar? And how many copies, Rob?
It should be four copies.
Four copies and a Mylar, okay. We'll sign the Mylar now, so you can take that.
Yeah.
Try that one. There's plenty of them in here.
Sawmill right here.
Buzz is there, Sawmill is there, just the bridge.
That's that funny intersection right there.
So, it's further down than Buzz. The house on the corner is the accessible house.
The new one.
Then you have like the log house.
And there's the log house.
Then the next one.
And where's the horse one? Where's the horse?
Way down, further down.
Back this way, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't even know there was that.
Do we have many recs at that?
Okay, get signed.
I get signing, yeah, okay. How many recs have to be signed?
That intersection?
Just the Mylar?
The Mylar's over here.
I got the Mylar.
Just the Mylar.
Yeah.
Well, stamp it.
My question was, do we have many recs at that intersection of Cedar and Webster Street?
That would be on my scope.
It's dangerous as hell. Webster, because you've got to make a...
Oh, sorry, Mike.
45, you're traveling 40 or 45.
We can stamp those later.
Yeah, you can.
Throw them up behind you.
Sorry.
The interesting thing about this one is there is a note on the plan limiting the use on one of the lots.
I didn't know that. I knew you didn't do the video.
Well, that's what I was going to say, so the $45,000 only allows specific things that are to call out.
That's why I said to wait.
And then if you don't...
It's happening in my gizmo here.
Thank you very much.
Is there a lake here, here?
There's a bowl in the backyard. Could possibly be a lake. You're going to have to double-check that map.
It could be a hole right there.
This has water, right?
That's it.
All right, are we ready, board?
All right, thank you, guys. See you later, Rob.
All right, have a good night. All right, next item on the agenda, A&R Plan David R. and Susan L. LaRue.
Yep.
130 and 134 Southeast Main Street.
Further this up on the...
Thank you.
Just give you a name.
Okay. For the record, Margaret Bacon, on with Civil Site Engineer, and I'm here requesting the board endorse this A&R Plan for existing lot on Southeast Main Street. It's 130, 134, like it's subdivided into two lots. There is an existing house already on this lot over here, and the driveway, there's a shared driveway that's also being constructed. It'll come in here and then go up to the other lot.
Did you say will be?
Right now, there is a shared driveway, yes.
Proposed? Okay, so is it proposed or is it existing?
It is right here on this lot, there's an existing shared driveway.
Yeah.
And we stop right at the property line.
Where does it stop?
Right here at the property line.
But the easement's not there?
Yeah, I believe there's no access.
Yeah, there is an easement there.
Well, that's the point, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're separating that in a tooth?
Correct, yes.
Oh, $5,500, scrap it.
I believe this lot here is about 2.8 acres, this lot here is about 2.1 acres.
So, is that easement recorded?
I believe so, not yet, no.
Yeah, I don't think they can record an easement to themselves because they own both pro... Well, it's one property.
They own it all right now, yeah.
Yeah. I don't like the word proposed on the A&R Plan, but I don't see how they could have reserved an easement.
Margaret, do you have any feedback on that? How we give that lot access?
Why?
7A?
Well, when they actually do sell this lot, then yes, there'll have to be an easement prepared here, they'll get them into this lot.
See, the issue becomes...
At this moment, it's not, an approval not required.
Correct.
The issue becomes, if this lot exists, conservation would have to permit a crossing at this location, okay? So, by the mere fact that they're just... We have wetlands and steep slopes across the entire frontage, which may be perceived by the board as an access-limiting feature.
Right.
Okay? So, she's showing a proposed easement that doesn't exist.
I agree.
So, it's kind of like a catch-22, you know? The intent of giving the easement is great, but there's nothing that says they're ever going to do that.
Yeah, I think before you've subdivided, you'd have to show that $5,500, and then, with meets and bounds and stuff, to make an easement plan, and then you would have it in an entity or something that runs with the land.
Well, it does have...
It's a separate entity.
It does have bearings and distances on it.
It's not in the registry at this moment, though.
And it's only proposed.
So, it could change. We're not guaranteed that that is actually going to...
Do the access.
What would that require, Bill? Just like a note on the plan or...
I mean...
The book and page of the easement recorded on the plan.
But you can't, as a practical matter, you can't deed an easement to yourself.
Why don't you deed it to an entity, a separate entity, and then it carries through on the square footage of land.
But it's one piece of property currently today.
Yeah, so it remains with all the land.
Or can it not be made with...
I see what you're saying.
As a whole, and that it goes to a certain point wherever you've designed this.
So, I mean, as a practical matter, they can do that relatively simply, and...
Or can it not be made with...
You could say not a separate build of a lot, but that doesn't carry as much weight, yeah.
Right.
That would come up even more probably, yeah, not...
Where the lot can't be sold, so the easement is recorded.
Well, yeah, it would have to run with the land, and then she would have it so that it's shown on the plan that it's attached to 7A for granting of the rights, according to the easement location recorded. Right now, you don't have a way in.
Oh, to the, this lot here? Well, let's say, well, then it goes back to what Bill's saying. What are you going to do? Record an easement to himself?
Well, can they... Well, to a third party, so he sets up a... I mean, it seems so convoluted.
Yeah, it does.
You know...
Instead, Tracy, can you just educate me about conservation, that they could put in access through, like over on, you know, near me, where there's a...
Over wetlands.
Over wetlands, and apply for that, them owning that land, and have a proper access to that parcel, and then this is a moot point on the easement, then have no easement, right?
First, they're volunteering to use the shared driveway, so that they don't need to do the crossing.
You're calling it a shared driveway, but there's two separate driveways there now.
That's what you're calling it, shared driveway.
Well, I don't know why they're calling it a shared driveway, because there's two separate driveways.
Okay, that's... But it's all on one lot.
It says shared driveway around here.
I don't know why.
So, back to your point, for an A&R, there's limiting access features along the whole entire frontage, like Bill said. It's greater than 10% slopes and all wet. So, we, as a board, can determine, which they've determined, that the easiest way in is using where it's existing, so that they can nicely get in there without a crossing.
But the cleanest way in from a title standpoint and from ownership is to have each lot have its own driveway, its own access.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think if I'm a buyer, when I bought, not a charity...
Going Northwest Main, there's a bunch of them set up.
Okay.
It's less impactful, but I don't think that, at this moment, we could approve this as...
Where it's wooded, where it's lined up.
Yeah.
By having a shared driveway or a proposed driveway.
Yes, I did, it's the last comment.
Okay.
Would it be easy enough to record a plan showing just the easement as a no-new-lines plan or an easement document to one of your companies, and then...
Well, I just own it personally. I mean, I've talked to my lawyer on it, you know?
Yeah.
I just thought the easement...
I don't want it to get too complicated.
We can't...
But the issue, you understand the issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no way of putting a note on this lot where cannot be conveyed until the easement...
We can't limit that.
No, we can't condition an A&R, we can't.
Yeah, okay.
So, back to what you were saying, they could call out the easement.
They could deed, they can have an easement plan recorded at the registry, which seems like an extra step in time and whatever, and then come back with this very same plan, but just change the word "shared" and put in the book...
Existing easement filed, registered, book page, and then that's it, all approved, right?
Yeah.
You're just saying that the easement has to have its own...
It has to be existing.
It can't be attached to the first 7A.
7B. 7A doesn't exist.
Right, it would have to be part of 7B.
Right, it would just be on your lot, on your existing lot.
On 7B, the one that's built on now.
It would be conveyed ultimately to whoever buys 7A, the rights to it, okay? It would be on the D for 7B.
It's because of the wording that's on here, everything's like proposed and shared, and there's no, nothing extra in stone to say that.
Right, so just...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, it looks good, but it's just...
So, access is the issue.
The access. The wording for it.
So, we could either vote on it, or you could withdraw it.
Withdraw without prejudice.
And we'll waive the fee, right?
You could waive the fee.
Yeah, waive the fee.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, and we'll waive the fee if you do.
We have a boil plate form for that now, Bill?
I don't know.
Other than that, everything looks great.
I'm just thinking, if you had a plan done, and then you allow the use for all the, somehow all the square footage of the lot, so that you didn't have to draft up the easement until after, be a good land use civil...
Well, I guess I want to just make sure we're clear on what we're doing here. I'm going to prepare another easement plan. Is that what you're looking for?
We don't need to see any of that.
Yeah, no.
The plan is just going to reference the book and page of the...
Your revised plan is just going to reference the easement that's recorded.
Okay.
Any way you want to do that.
Okay, all right.
And then you'll come back with this all on it, reference easement, blah, 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 and we know that there's an easement to the...
That would be a note on the plan, too, though, Bill, right?
It would be a note on the plan saying it's an access easement recorded at, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, all right, very good.
We'll just need you to sign the withdrawal.
I don't know, that's a good point.
You can continue if you are, boy.
That's...
Do we need to make a motion or anything on that, or...
Vote to accept or withdraw?
Yeah. That we're accepting more?
I guess we can go to the finish.
Yeah.
You can go, you can go.
I will make a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal without prejudice and to move that we will waive the filing fees for the next time they come in.
Second half.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, abstain, motion carries.
And that refiling is within six months?
Yeah, that, yeah. As a friendly amendment, I'm sure he wants to get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. I know we had an issue with that before.
Okay, yeah, within six months, yeah, not six years.
Right.
You need to sign it, or?
Yeah, I signed it, too. Thanks, Dave.
All right, next item. A and R plan, Edward Typley, Barbara Typley, Scallion, and Gretchen Typley, 2428.
Oh, geez, you're trying to send us a letter. Did you do this?
I think that worked.
I'll be gone. Get some of that, yeah, okay. Colored versions here, it's a little easier to discuss.
Do you need more?
Thank you.
You need it more than I do.
Another one?
Oh, my.
Just give me a name and stuff, Byron, color, everything.
Very good.
Wreck it.
Good evening, my name is Byron Andrews, I'm with Andrew Survey and Engineering, representing Ed Typley tonight. Mr. Typley has, um, two pieces, two parcels of property, one in his name, one in Gretchen Typley, and, uh, basically what he is hoping to do is to take the two parcels, re-convigia the property lines, um, to give one of the parcels more area, um, you know, more buildable area. Currently, the, the, this is the two properties here. The property, the name Gretchen Typley is this piece right down here that's outlined in red, and the rest is, uh, Mr. Typley. So, what, um, you would like to do is separate a par, a piece here from this one, convey it to this one, and separate this section of the back of Mr. Typley's land, convey it to this, so that you're left with two parcels outlining green.
Once it maintains setbacks in the house, doesn't, yeah, it would, because you're keeping that land.
Okay.
That's good.
They both have frontage, um, they would use the current access.
The side yard, helps the side yard.
Now, the house side yard?
Existing building, right? Right, because that line is straight down now.
Did you check any of the setbacks for that existing house as you're cutting that red line there?
No.
Oh, oh, you added it? Okay, okay.
That's why I was saying.
That's part hit, it's going to the green.
Okay.
Red's gonna go.
It shifted.
So, we, we screw the side setback, although the front setback is in the front setback.
Is the house pre-existing non-conforming, Byron?
Um, Ed, do you know when the house was built?
Um, late 1700s, early 1800s.
So, I would say, yeah, it's safe to say.
So, before zoning, in other words, it's not-
It's just made.
It's not getting the feet off the road.
No.
So, so by doing this, are you creating a non-conforming lot? I mean, we don't consider zoning here, we would have to endorse this, but I'm just raising the question.
Um, well, the, the building would be, would not conform to the current zoning, however, the lots themselves would conform to the current zoning.
Correct.
But you're making a brand-new lot with an existing non-conforming structure, and you're making it brand-new versus that 1800 lot that you maintain intact the sides-
Just wanted me to be able, I'm sure you know.
The lot's sidelines.
Right.
So, you are making it, you can't do anything on that.
Yeah, we can't, we can't create this lot to make the pre-existing house conforming, I mean, it-
Right, no, I'm just saying, an addition and all that, yes.
Okay.
You wouldn't really have additions, because your lot is gonna be 2018.
Yes.
Well, unless, but wouldn't you go, unless you conform to the contemporary setbacks, front and side yard, on those additions, you still have to go for finding on that?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Before zoning later.
If it goes from pre-existing non-conforming to non-conforming.
Right.
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay, Bill, any questions?
Uh, no, I just want to point out for the board, for, and for consistency, there is a difference, as you'll see, this also says proposed access easement, however, the difference is, this has an existing house with an existing gravel driveway that they can use for access, um, and then there's plenty of frontage on the other lot, Lot One, uh, to, to gain access, so I don't think it's the same thing as the last one we just saw.
So, we have a small lot, one you're saying, it's very spented?
There is, but they've, they've got a paved driveway.
There's two driveways anyway.
Correct, correct.
So, there's an existing gravel drive, and then there's another gravel.
Right.
Right. Hey, Boyd, any questions?
Yeah, existing shared driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Shared between two?
Uh, shared between the two parcels, there's no, there's no bowling back here.
You haven't, this implies it already exists, right? So, you're, there's already an egg?
There is an existing driveway here, currently it's, it's used just for the town.
Okay. It will become shared.
It will become shared, yeah, and it goes on the-
On its own.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, it's misleading.
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's misleading on shared, because there's actually not another unit, living unit-
Yeah.
To be shared.
Right, it's being used by the-
Pretend.
By the adjacent lot, not by the lot it's on.
It's only by one person, not shared.
Right.
All right, yeah, with the conveyance of part of this Lot One front parcel A to Lot Two, what is the square footage, rough and tough, of the front part of the existing parcel A, after the conveyance of that area?
Front part of the existing parcel A?
Yeah, it says parcel A 27,300, is, is that before the conveyance of?
That's, uh, that would be after the conveyance, that 27,000 square feet is only this area within-
What's left, okay, so you're conveying about 6,800, it says, to the new parcel, right?
Originally, the part, like, as it currently exists, has like about 30,000 square feet.
Can I ask for curiosity, why, if both of these had plenty of square footage and you have the frontage, that you're conveying this little piece, I mean, it helps in the non-conformity, the side yard, but is, what's the feeling about that? Is it because of the side yard, or is there some other reason?
It's not a non-conformity, okay, it's pre-existing.
Pre-existing, right, but, but why are you conveying this little etched-out piece? What's the thought process of? Side yard. Inquiring minds want to-
25 feet. Yeah, what it is, we're maintaining the required frontage here, he gets the rest of the frontage, as much of the driveway as feasible.
Okay.
It's easier, possibly have to do another driveway or whatever he has to do there.
Right.
He has the room to do it.
Right, he could just pop in from the front, right to that existing driveway, I see. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Nothing further, Bill?
Don't.
I'll make a motion to endorse an A and R plan for Edward and Barbara Tepal-
Hi, hi.
On 2428 Main Street.
Second half?
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, abstain, motion carries. Can I have a mile out with you?
Eight, eight o'clock, we did that.
You guys wanted a lot of time to talk about the first item.
Subdivision cisterns?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
Probably discussion.
We should sign.
Yeah, you can do that, too.
We should convey it.
Of what?
Of frontage. Remember he said, we take the 10 and take, what he was gonna be 50 or so? It's like 77 feet.
It rolls all open.
So, it's more than 50. What would be kind of even, I don't think it was new, and get that how, one little driveway come in for the farm access, so you have a lot of frontage exception, you know?
Aaron.
Sorry, thank you. Keep seeing you everywhere, you know that.
I know.
We're just doing easement.
Could do that, too, and use the same.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. As you could probably tell, I'm not like a big person on easements, you know, if you can help it. Who else?
I never know.
I'm like, keep it clean, you don't have to do it.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, which is-
Everybody sign it, Aaron, you sign?
Yes, thank you.
It's all set to go.
You got the paper copies.
All right.
You got the paper copies?
Thank you, see you next time.
Uh, paper copies are-
Right here.
I got, I got them ready, we'll sign them at the end.
Plus, they have some redesign to do with, uh, snow.
You picked them back up again.
Truck access, delivery.
The scopes in the package, look at the graphics.
And I love the idea that you either have to have capacity to, uh, accept tractor trailers and have a place for the pull-off, you know, and the, uh, landscape trucks, you know? It really should.
Well, currently, they park at the Highway Garage, at least one a day, at least.
Is that, I've been writing on the one before.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean anything.
You can put notes till the council can hold that plan up.
Same thing, right?
The thing is, they have access without that easement.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Oh, right, full-on Main Street, they can make that anywhere they want. It's different than that, way different.
Correct, correct.
Want to do subdivision cisterns?
It's not, it's not apples.
Subdivision cisterns, number two.
Bananas.
We have to wait till eight o'clock for the next part of the hearing.
Yeah, we have 15 minutes.
What do you want to do next?
All of it up, so.
Start, yeah, go through the discussion.
We want to get rid of the things we have to do, which is like the special permits for the accessory apartments.
Maybe eight fifteen, they want to continue.
No, we could, we could, it's, the hearing is not until eight o'clock, you can't start until eight o'clock.
So, let's get through everything we need to do, and then we can leave after the eight o'clock.
After we sign the plans.
My, uh-
Let's get moving, people.
All right.
Subdivision cisterns, I still don't know what it means.
Okay, you have a stapled packet toward the rear of your package today.
Fire suppression.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, the fire chief is requesting that the planning board consider adopting, as part of our rules and regulations, requirements for new subdivisions that are not within the water supply district to require cisterns on-site that meet certain parameters, um, so-
They want water for fire, right?
So, this, this is an example of what he's suggested, I think he grabbed this from another town, um, so it may not be exactly what we want, um, but what I'm looking for you, not tonight, is just to take a look at this, maybe at the next meeting, I'll, I'll keep that on the agenda, um, and we could have a little more lengthy discussion on what we think about that. I can even have the chief come in and address the board if you want.
Do we have a ballpark on how much these things cost?
They're based on-
30,000?
What, little, I know, probably more than that.
Well, it's minimum 30,000 on this one.
30,000 gallon tank, yeah. That's, uh, insurance standards, set that far, and, um, there's other parameters that, that are, you know, how far from the houses he can go and stuff like that, that need to be weighed in, so a project, so what, if we grant a waiver and have like a 3,000-foot road, may have several cisterns throughout the project, so this, these regs would go over the requirements for the spacing, the sizing.
I'd be curious to see what-
I'm confused.
What do, what do you need to know?
Well, most of this town is, is not on the water system.
Correct.
So, is the new requirement gonna be something like every new home has to have a cistern?
No, no, project, subdivision project.
Subdivision.
So, this would be part of our subdivision-
So, they have a storage, water supply for fire. Single-family home.
Not an individual home, this would be for a subdivision project, and we can set parameters as to like, if it's three or less, you don't have to do it, or whatever, you know?
It's probably a great idea.
So, I'd like to know in general costs, if there's projected cost for these things, as well as-
Oh, Andy, yes.
90 grand.
Okay, for 30,000?
I was gonna say 70 grand, but that's the number I heard today.
Five of the last.
Five of the last.
More money, but it won't reach as much as that.
Right, right.
Okay, and also on-
What kind of maintenance?
Towns that have adopted this, how often they are used, what's their prevalence, you know, things like that. I want to get an idea of the big picture on who is implementing this.
Yeah, the, the chief is requesting this, the fire chief.
No, I mean, like, in the, in Massachusetts.
Oh.
I don't know how many towns-
Okay, I can put a query out on, on the planner's list serve.
Sure.
Because I think it's quite a burden.
You also lose-
Safety is a burden.
I'd like to know how many times that it's been used, too, like, what's the, is it, you hook up to a cistern in Massachusetts 20 times a year, 50 times a year, 500 times a year, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and whatever the cost, you know, it's gonna be passed on to the buyer, so-
Right.
That's just another increase in the house. I agree, but, yeah. Are these like open cisterns? They take the rainwater and all that?
Would you like me to invite the chief in to our next meeting?
If, if he wants to, I would like to see the documentation, though, like, I want to see-
No, I understand.
Before, hey, if I can-
So, so we can hold off.
Yeah, if he can get the documentation for us, and then when we get everything in front of us, we can look at it, and we can have the chief into-
Okay.
Would this gonna go on a town meeting?
No. This is our rules and regulations.
This is gonna go into a special permit? Oh, planning board rules and-
Planning board rules and regulations.
Yeah, it'd be subdivision rules and regulations, it would be just another-
Okay, a waiver request if needed, or?
Like any, like any of them, you can do, you can do a waiver request, yeah.
Right.
But, yeah, we could set up like, if there's only three houses, it's not required.
Right.
I would hope that it's in here.
50 houses, and we want to look at it.
Everybody read it over, homework for next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bill, you can look up that other stuff in the meantime, and then, once we get all the info, then we can have the chief come in.
Yep, yep.
I mean, maybe the chief already knows.
He might, he might, you know, he could probably explain his, uh, how he arrived at this better than I can. I just know that it's for safety reasons, he can probably tell you his logic.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I just really want to know about that.
Second one is, uh, sign accessory apartments, special permit, we can do that at the end of the meeting.
Well, we need to vote on it, though.
Uh, no.
Oh, we already said, we already voted?
We already voted on it.
Oh, okay, all right.
The other one is signed.
Number three is sign second page, fifty-three G funds. We already voted on that.
Yeah, we did.
Four and five, we have to vote on. All right.
Okay.
Vote and sign release of fifty-three G funds, Williams Estates subdivision, Colin here. Any questions on that?
No, it's just, you might recall, we had Colin came in at our last meeting. We met the new developer. Maybe we didn't. He was here. He's already going, like gangbusters on that site. He's posted sure his fifty-three G money. So, we've got money in the account. We just got to release Colin's money back to him.
Okay.
Which we said last meeting.
He had two projects. We did one, I think, in this.
We did Northwoods, I believe. So, we have to vote on Williams.
So, you probably have the voucher to sign in there, Ernie. You could get a dollar amount off of that.
I didn't get a sign file.
What?
Sign packet?
Nope. There was no sign file.
There we go.
Do you have any of that?
No. This is less than...
I guess we're not signing that stuff. Can we authorize Ernie to sign?
Yeah. We've already authorized.
I know, I know.
We authorized one. The other two we haven't voted on yet.
Oh.
I'm like working off the one that was in front of me.
Number three, sign second page, release funds, fifty-three G, Northwoods subdivision. We did vote on that, I believe.
Did we vote for William Estates?
But we have to vote on that, so I don't know if we did or not.
So, we don't have a sign.
This is a different... No, we did discuss this.
We need eye guns.
Not Chromebooks. I am not a Chromebook kind of girl.
Nothing there at all, huh?
No, where is the...
I saw the...
I think it's like eight oh five soon. We released funds to cover something in Northwoods.
Northwoods, we did, yes. We did in Northwoods. We haven't done the other two, which is Williams Estates.
Yeah.
Let me look in here.
That's why it's signed Northwoods and not the other.
We have to vote on them right now.
But we're looking for them.
We're looking for Williams Estates, right?
Yeah, we're looking for Dollarwood.
What is it?
We're really not moving too fast on this.
It's only one to mine.
Maria didn't put the sign file up.
I think he went to go look for it. Huh?
I don't see any info on either. No, I don't believe we did. We acted on Northwoods. We didn't act on the other two, so we have to look on those.
Oh, is it?
There's no information.
Yay.
There is.
We do have it.
Northwoods, right there.
William?
Yeah, Williams is one we have to vote on.
What's the amount on that?
One thousand, two hundred and three and forty-six cents.
Okay, so you got that, Boyd? One and five?
If I could, I would like to make a motion to return the balance of the Williams, William Estates subdivision in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents plus any accrued interest to date from that William Estates subdivision fifty-three G account.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's abstained. Motion carries.
And then Morse Pond Preserve should be in there, too.
Next one down.
Yeah, voting sign Morse Pond Reserve, yeah.
That's the one that used to be the eight lots or whatever, but then it went to one.
Correct.
One house lot.
Yeah. I'm looking for it.
Eleven lots, I think.
Eleven. Eight to ten.
Now, it's one.
Morse Pond, right here. Okay, that one is...
Make a motion to return the fifty-three G account funds for the Morse Pond Preserve in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and sixty-four cents plus any accrued interest to date.
Second. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's abstained. Motion carries. Couple minutes. iPad Chromebook.
I have this fancy schmancy spreadsheet I put together.
Just hold it up.
I put it in large font so everyone could read it easily.
You did that?
I did that.
You tell Apple lower the price.
Now, these, I just pulled off the website, so there'd probably be a little discount on either case. And these are both bottom-of-the-line models. The advantage, I think, of the iPads is you can zoom in. I don't think the Chromebook can do that, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
The iPad would be the way. Their bottom line is full, you know, full features probably on the iPad.
So, tell me about the refurbished section.
I did not look at the refurbished section. I did, just so, just for interest, I did contact the school department to see if they had any residual iPads that were no longer functional for us.
Yeah.
And they don't.
They won't disappear.
Right. If, you know... Maybe some residents can donate their old ones. I don't know.
We don't want all the same. Let's just get it right.
We could have a volunteer stand by at the dumpster of the transfer station.
Check on you on refurbs.
I can do that.
I mean, right?
Yeah.
Just look at the volume of paper.
Literally, we're gonna open a piece of paper that we're gonna have PDFs in.
Yeah, Matt thinks it's a great idea.
I know you're a lawyer, I didn't have...
There's some federal...
And I want to reiterate, it wouldn't be limited necessarily to the planning board. We'd probably share it with the other boards, too.
It's hard to imagine that working.
It's gonna work. Sounds fine. It's flawless.
Yeah, okay.
Russ, Russ and I tech savvy yet.
Everybody has to be looking at the same thing.
If you want, we can still do paper copies. We don't necessarily, like I said, we can get two, we can get one, we can get none. And it's really up to the board.
But we would all be concert. We'd go on the same thing.
The advantage of having it electronically is you could go in and explore the world of data on a particular project. You could go back to the very first day. You know, sometimes these hearings last a while and...
Then I agree.
Are you looking for something for us tonight, from us tonight?
No, no, I'm just sharing information, following up from last.
Yeah, see, we have for municipality discount, too, because then all the teachers are getting discounts, so we can see if...
Sure.
Or if there's grant money for technology. That would be even better. It's like a one-page, I could fill it out for you.
Or if a local business.
No.
Aren't we gonna beta test this idea?
Tis the season.
Not yet.
Just say maybe. Don't say no. Maybe.
Maybe a lot of help.
I would fill up paperwork. If Bill wants to look up some grants, I can do that and make our case.
We didn't quite get through everything, but we'll go to our next public hearing now.
Excuse me, but weren't we gonna like beta test this concept somehow? Somehow we were talking about having a trial.
We did. That was the last meeting. Remember I did the agenda up all nice?
Yeah.
Yes. No.
I emailed you, to you, you clicked on the links and...
It was flawless. Oh, I didn't look at them. It's an email. I only looked at my, you know, once I blew them out.
That was the trial.
That was the trial.
You missed it.
You missed it.
Still got the link, then, I guess, so.
Yep.
Okay, we ready, Boyd? We're done. We're done. Public hearing continued. State of Harry Bedoin and Pine, Sand and Stone Company, Engle, Gilboa Street. Okay, you have somebody pressing?
We were a couple short this morning.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was told.
I'm sure you were.
Well, not me personally, but... Are you ready?
Okay. I just need your name and...
Sure. For the record, my name is Ronald Tuffin. I'm a registered lands buyer. I'm here from Derry, Ealing, representing the applicants in this earth removal permit.
Thank you.
Just a quick overview of what's gone on since the last meeting. There were a few outstanding issues brought up at the meeting, and also Bill was trying to put his comments in writing, and we've addressed those, and he met with Bill, and we made some additional changes to the plan and also responded to what came out of that meeting. Basically, what we've done on the plan, first of all, the largest change would be to remove any of the work that was within a hundred feet of Gilboa Street. That was one of the things that Bill had pointed out. We would have needed to request either request a waiver or get permission from the selectmen for that. And we decided to pull everything back, and there were other issues, too, as far as screening and sound and stuff. We thought it was just a better idea to pull everything back and leave that as a buffer to the street. In doing that, obviously, we pulled the slopes back, and with the two-to-one maximum slope, the bottom of our excavation actually ended up, I want to say it's about, was it eleven feet higher than it was previously? We had, we had a kind of like a depression towards the street that had three forty-five before, now we're at three fifty-six at the bottom. As a result of that, we're slightly less with the amount that we're taking out of the area. A couple other things I'd like to point out that you can see on the plan is that there was a little confusion over to how what we're proposing now fit in with Phase One that was, is in the process going on right now. And you can see this area that's hatched on the plan, and it's delineated here as the limit of Phase One. And Phase Two would be everything towards Gilboa Street, and then this area around the edge also. So, while there is eleven points, I think now it's like eleven point five or six acres total, a big chunk of that is Phase One that's already being worked. And the reason we included it is because we will be taking some more out of that when we're working, when we're closed out. The elevations here will be different than what we proposed in Phase One. There were a few other housekeeping items added to the plan, table for the groundwater elevations. We had, we had a detail showing silt fencing and erosion control at the limit of work here. But basically, we're at the top of the hill. Everything that hits the ground here is gonna run into the center of the excavation. So, what we'd like to do is, instead of the silt fence and the hay bales or wattles, we'd like to just put up orange, like construction fence or safety fence to delineate the area. And we are actually in the process of staking that out. Actually, the guys are gonna be there tomorrow to stake out Phase Two. And last week, they staked the limit of Phase One. Also, the areas that hadn't been staked or where the stakes were going from when it was staked before. Oh, we did request an additional waiver. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact wording, but basically, it was concerning the two-thirds of the site being restored while the work is going on. Basically, we feel that because this, you have to go through Phase One to get to Phase Two, it's not really practical to restore this whole area while we're working up here. We certainly do plan on restoring the areas where we don't need to go through, the side slopes especially. Anywhere we can, we can restore without having to worry about it getting messed up after we restore it. So, we've added a few areas for loan stock files to the plan where the, the loan will be kept and used as we go along. And certainly, we're not trying to get away from the restoration as we go along, which we just don't think we're gonna be able to to keep the two-thirds. So, we've asked for a waiver on that. You'll also notice that on the plan, we've broken Phase Two into two phases itself, Phase Two A being just under ten acres, and then Phase Two B being the final two-point-two acres out towards Gilboa. So, we'll, this area should be, should be done before we start on this area. I believe that's...
Where is Phase One at this point? It's completed? What has been removed, completed?
There's still some remaining volition.
Okay. Yeah, right.
Tracy, we went in as far on Phase One as we could to leave a safety factor up top, which is still in Phase One, but in order to clear the trees and the stumps and stuff, we had to leave, I don't know, probably a hundred feet up there.
Okay. And so, as far as restoration on that, so we're holding a bond. So, what would you say percentage was? Your, so what's your game plan after you take down the remaining for Phase One that was permitted? Like, what, how many cubic feet is that, cubic yards?
Well, our game plan is to continue through Phase One into Phase Two until we make enough flat area to begin to restore something. Right now, it's just not possible between stock files and the height of the hill and the faces and so forth.
We have stocked out about twenty thousand square feet on one slope.
Okay. So, what's your thoughts on, like, having this whole entire thing open as far as restoring?
They said they wanted to do the slopes. Those are slopes as much as get going along, you know? But, I mean, it's not gonna wash in one area, so, I mean...
So, the regulation's clear, okay. They're asking for two waivers, I think, that are associated to your question. The most that you're, under the regulations that you can excavate is ten acres. They're exceeding that slightly. So, that's waiver number one. Number two, normally, we have, and the regs require, that only one-third of the operation be exposed at any given time, and if they go beyond that, they have to restore it in thirds, basically. So, theoretically, if it's a twelve-acre site, we're looking at four-acre areas. So, I don't think, they're seeking relief from that requirement. So, you know, I don't know if there's a cap on what you're looking for operationally, exposed?
Let me ask you this. On Phase One, how much further down are you gonna be going on Phase One, do you think, from where you're at?
About fourteen feet, was it?
Yeah, probably about ten to fourteen feet now.
Further down?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's silly in a way to seed it, just to go ahead and bring it back down. See, that's the thing. If they're going in here, they're gonna bring it all level.
So, it's not supposed to be more than the ten acres, but then we've got Phase One as well that is adjacent.
Well, this incorporates Phase One entirely.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
It says, okay, Phase Two, it says eleven feet.
But they're going down slightly in elevation in Phase One.
They're combining it all together. So, Phase One was six acres.
Yeah.
Phase, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but Phase Two A, we're calling it, is the Phase One, six acres plus four more acres.
Oh, okay.
And Phase Two B, we wouldn't touch. We restored twenty thousand square feet of Phase One.
Okay.
And our intent is to do some more on the slopes as the opportunity.
You're essentially re-permitting Phase One.
Yes. And this is where my issue is. I mean, my preference, and I'd ask the applicant to consider this as they go forward, and I think the board should explore this. Instead of coming in, chipping away, I think there's value in seeing what the ultimate master plan is on these earth removal projects. I would prefer to see one permit that comes through, and then they phase it as they see fit operationally, and we basically go that for it. And maybe, you know, they need to extend it after three years, and they come in, get it extended. But, you know, I think there's value in seeing what the end goal is, and when they come in on these little pieces, we don't get that picture.
The only other question I have is, and I think we've brought this up before, that is the proposed road for the Nostal Park up there. In reality, the game plan is, once this is all done, then they're gonna go out, hit the whole perimeter?
Once this is all done, this whole section, then the game plan is to go out and hit the whole perimeter, get the road down to Great, go Gilboa and the roadway, that way there. This will already be at great. You're gonna have the banking for the road, banking by Gilboa, and that's all you have left, is just that U shape. They just start it winding, go right around, clean it right on out.
Once we go for the road, we'll have to bring in the conservation.
Yeah, to get that all laid out for road entrance, the whole nine yards and the whole deal going in on that.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, the way you're doing it, I think is great. It's all laid out here. It's just on...
So, what's your rate of restoration? As far as, you're saying you're not meaning it in your waiver request. You don't believe that you can do the two-thirds minimum, can be upheld while the work is ongoing, so what are you going to hold up?
What percentage of the work will be restored?
I'm doing math in my head.
You can think about it.
I mean, it's, and don't get me wrong, I mean, you're gonna be in a bowl, pretty much in there. But you know as well as I know, when the summer winds, it can stir up a lot of shit up there.
Something harvesty.
And that's, that's why we're asking about it. Holding some of it. Holding some of it, you know what I mean?
No, I just need to have an idea, we can't just leave it all in.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, some of it.
Yeah, fortunately, it's very, the area was blessed with very decent gravel that doesn't blow a lot in the wind. It's coarse material, but I would be reasonable to shoot for twenty-five percent.
Okay, so thirty-three percent, that's fine.
And knowing that when we go for the final phase, we'll have to remove that loam and seed and incorporate that into the roadway.
Yeah, when you go to take the whole final chunk right on out of it, yeah. Yeah, because then you'd be starting to prep for twenty-four.
No.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five is more...
Reasonable.
Yeah. Just call it a versus twenty-four. Yeah, I'd be, I'm more comfortable with that than just leaving it as, oh, we're just going to do whatever we want. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So, explain that to me.
So instead of doing the one-third at a time, he's saying he can do twenty-five percent, one-fourth.
Okay.
Maintaining it as he goes for restoration.
Yep, yep.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I mean, it's got to get done for the final, the final plan, we all know what that is.
How many waivers were there?
Five.
I know one is the acreage.
Yeah, but I took the opportunity to draft a sample decision for...
Okay.
So... And on page nine, eight and nine of that are the waivers.
For me, it's on page two and three, but I guess that's okay.
He's talking about in the decision. You drafted the decision here.
Were you at a point where you were comfortable moving on with this deal?
Yeah, I think the issues that are remaining are really these waivers. You know, the one thing I do want to point out is, historically, we have requested a waiver from allow... There's a regulation that says they can strip the topsoil that's on the site, stockpile it, and use that for restoration. We've always requested that that be requested as a waiver. And we've granted that waiver for a couple of reasons. One, we don't know the quality of the soil that's out there. And number two, from a surety perspective, if we had to come in... Something, we've had projects where they've sold the material, even though they were supposed to stockpile it. We have no control over that day-to-day operation. So we've always carried a surety amount to loam and seed, presuming we're bringing in loam and seed.
Correct.
So that's not what's being proposed here. They're complying with our regulations, which go back over twenty years. And we've had problems, so we've requested that waiver. So that's the only thing I want to point out. They're proposing to stockpile the material and then use that for restoration.
So the waiver number six?
No, they're not requesting.
Okay, they're not requesting them.
So... Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah, part of the additional waiver we requested, we've added a note to the plan and in the waiver request. We stated that no loam will be removed from the site until the final restoration is done. So you shouldn't have to be concerned with them trucking it out, selling it, whatever. It's going to be there, we'll do our twenty-five percent. And the rest will be there for us to use as soon as the area is ready. We won't have to bring any in or bring any...
How do we know that's going to happen, though? With notes on the plan?
Yeah.
I don't know. Because it's like, let's just say we have to do it ourselves, and there's no loam there.
I understand.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Pine's saying that since its twenty-first year of earth removal in the town of Douglas, probably approaching seventy total acres that have been earth removed and restored and released. There are still piles of loam all over the place. Because if you think about a project like this, almost any project where you're taking an irregular hill, you strip the loam off it and you end up with a flat surface. You have far less area to loom than you started out with. I guess what I'm really saying is, at some point in time, those twenty-one years ought to be the answer to your question. Pine's not going anywhere, we're cemented in the ground down there.
I appreciate that. So they're looking for a bond adjustment on that restoration or materials?
Well, I guess that's my question to the board. So, I mean, the regs allow for this, I want to be clear about that. We've not done it in the eighteen years I've been here, had allowed earth removal permits to scrape the topsoil, stockpile it, and use that for the very reasons I mentioned.
Where is that allowed in the regs?
I'd have to get the bylaws, but it's... Do you have a...? Does anybody have a...?
I mean, the ultimate goal is going to be an industrial park. With the roadway and everything else, and all the yards, so... I mean, that's going to be the ultimate goal.
What will happen, well, this will logically get re-loamed. Then hopefully, somebody buys the lot, pushes the loam on.
Well, that's, I mean...
When it's all said and done from the...
Rocking the hard place on.
Supposed plan, I mean, that's what's supposed to happen, yeah. Because you start going in, if you're putting in big buildings and this and that, you're going in there and you're raking it all down. Getting all your foundations and footings in, then bringing in all of your stuff to finish it up.
Here it is already, too.
Okay.
Retained subsoil and topsoil shall be spread over the disturbed area to a minimum depth of four inches and be treated with three tons of lime per acre unless otherwise determined by permit conditions and seeded with a grass-legume mixture prescribed by the Southern Worcester County Soil Conservation District or by the Mass DOT for slope erosion control, trees or shrubs, blah, 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 blah. So basically, it's retained subsoil and topsoil.
Okay. So how is that falling under adjusted bonding amount? Is it saying you're not providing any cost for that restoration material?
Right, normally, I would...
So the bond will be zero?
The bond for that item would be, well, you'd carry a cost to spread it probably, but it'd be nominal.
To screen, screen and spread.
Screen and spread.
Yeah, I don't worry about, I mean, the extra material, but you got to screen, screen and spread. So...
Okay, yeah. Give it a whirl. Hasn't happened in eighteen years.
Twenty-one?
We've had problems in the past, and I'm not suggesting that Mr. Pine do that. I'm saying, I'm stating a fact that we've had problems in the past, and that's why we've done this.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. So all of these waivers are good with everyone?
Okay, do you want to, we can act on the waivers? We can...
Let's do it. The public carries?
Oh, you want me to close first?
What's that?
Want me to close first?
We can do it either way.
Okay. Make the motion.
Do you have any further reason for us not to close?
Yeah, audience.
No, okay.
You're going to ask in the audience, as a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, has anybody in the audience have any comments or questions? Seeing none, okay.
Mike, motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead. Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a long pause. All abstained, motion carries.
Good job, Mike.
Okay. waiver requests.
Like a motion to grant the waiver requests as written on the August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen letter. Section six point one point three, number four, section six point one point four, number six, section six point one point six, number thirteen, section six point one point seven, number one, and section six point six, section six point one point seven, number five.
And the twenty-five percent?
No, we're going to have that as a condition.
Condition, okay.
So you've got to waive that whole waiver, that whole section.
Okay. Any more questions?
Nope. I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Tracy to... Second the waivers? Seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained, motion carries. And what conditions do we have?
Twenty-five percent. Restoration will occur...
Maintain a twenty-five percent of open area.
Exactly. Twenty-five percent open at a time?
No, twenty-five percent restored.
Restored, rather than one-third, it'd be twenty-five percent. Not the only condition we had, Bill? I'll standard boil that.
That is, but I also want to say in my draft decision, I did leave some blanks in page four, which is the surety item on the cost per acre.
You left that blank?
I left that blank because I was unsure about the value.
Is there a reason that this has a start date of two thousand and sixteen?
What is that?
Under start date?
Oh, that was a typo, that'd be nineteen, I mean eighteen. And should it be end twenty-one? And those dates are gone actually altogether. If you look at page two, start date of nine-five-eighteen and end date of nine-five-twenty-one. And I'll have that fixed in the header.
Okay, so what are we doing with this surety amount per acre?
Well, I would have to calculate that.
Okay.
Based on, am I using Mass DOT weighted average bid prices? What am I doing? Minus loam, spreading.
Yeah, spreading, spreading.
Previously, we upped it to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we pretty much had a standard rate going.
Right, I know, last time, we said we were going to change that, that's why I'm leaving a blank.
We did change that, didn't we, Bill?
No, we didn't.
You raised it a thousand dollars an acre when we did, when we passed the A.
No, regardless. Last time, we discussed earth removal. It was stated that we would adjust that to match Mass DOT weighted average bid prices.
What's the difference?
I'd have to calculate it.
Okay. I seem to remember something about that discussion, but... Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
When we were here discussing the original Gilboa permit, and at that time, the rate was fourteen thousand an acre. Bill wanted thirty thousand an acre, and he itemized it based on what he just said. Okay, which to me is a worst-case scenario. Not just loam, but other factors can make it a worst-case scenario that somebody overexcavated, they left it a mess, and so forth. I asked the board not to go to thirty thousand and not to put you all in a bad spot, but you raised it a thousand dollars an acre, and that's what the amount of bond is on parcel A at Gilboa. And that's what, maybe the last that one up the street we did, which was a small one. But that's where we're at. But when I say a worst-case scenario, if you look at Bill's itemized list of things, it seems unfair to me to make it an absolute worst-case scenario that people have to bring in material from our site, be it topsoil or even fill because they overexcavated or in some way, you know, didn't deal with the stumps, didn't deal with the trees and the things that some people do. We'd just like consideration on that back.
Right.
Can I just make a comment?
Yep, go ahead, Bill.
I want to make it clear, you know, Jim said Bill, Bill a couple of times. I want to make it clear that when I do these calculations, I look at it as though the town is coming out and finishing the project, and I have to use what the town would have to pay for these things.
Yeah.
So I...
It's not Bill, Bill, it's the town.
The quantities I use and the numbers, the unit prices I use are backed, I provide all that information. I'm sure everyone's seen that plenty of times.
Yep.
So it's, there's basis for where I'm arriving at that number, it's not just arbitrary.
Right, I agree with you, it's not Bill, Bill, it's the town, the town.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah.
So what is the surety being held on the parcel one, the parcel A?
It's fifteen thousand.
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand right now. So now we're determining the surety based on twelve acres for this special permit. So you've got the ninety plus this.
Well, I'm sure the ninety would go back, and then this would take its place because it's over the same area.
Ninety, what addition up?
No, I understand, okay, so...
That permit would expire, so that would go back.
It's expiring? It's expired?
Well, was it expiring?
No, I understand, but I'm just asking about the surety, that we're adjusting the surety. So we've got a bond, right? You've got a bond for ninety, right?
Yes.
And that was at fourteen thousand an acre?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand?
Keep it the same for the rest. We'll be four, call it twelve acres.
Twelve, that's twelve.
Yeah.
What's your feeling on that, Board?
We did do it at fifteen thousand an acre for Phase One, right?
Yes.
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah. Oh.
Do we need to decide that tonight?
If you're going to vote on the decision...
Yeah, but I mean, I...
I thought we did bonding afterward.
No. It's...
We usually establish the numbers.
Number first.
No, typically, the number's in the decision.
Well, I think we had a number already for Phase One. And this is all going to still include part of Phase One, just a little bit more. Should stay at the same. And I think that was fifteen thousand an acre. So it'd be fifteen thousand an acre for a twelve-acre dig.
Was the original one for twelve acres?
No.
Six.
Six.
Six acres, six.
Yeah, so... I mean...
Now, the only thing I would suggest there, Mike, is if they're not doing the entire twelve acres at one time, it would be a smaller amount.
We have to hold it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to hold it?
Well, they're only doing, they're not restoring the whole thing.
It's not, they're not...
Oh, as far as the dust.
They're doing all twelve acres, yeah.
Right, so we're going to have to hold that money as it is. And then we're going to have to add on what we want to bond for this phase that they're asking for now.
Right, which is fine, yeah.
So it'll be ten. Ten. It's going to be like a hundred fifty thousand instead of the ninety bond. Right, and then they can bond the extra two? Is that what you guys are saying?
No, we have to decide on what the, what this permit's what.
Yeah, if we're deciding on fifteen thousand an acre.
Yeah.
If we go with that.
Right, if we go with that, right, yeah.
Right now, Phase One is all opened up, so we're going to hold that one.
We're going to hold that one, yes.
Then it's going to be determined on how many steps it's going to take to get to the very end.
Right, we're going to bond whatever this phase is now.
Yep.
A and B, phase, what is it, two?
So that's the way we're going, that's the way you guys are going to do it?
All of Phase Two.
Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Two A, then Two B?
You're going to, it's Two A and Two B, I realize that, but you have to bond the whole thing if we're going to write, if we're going to give a permit for it.
Right.
It's still going to be bonded, whether they're working in that area or not right now, you got to bond it.
Tracy had it correct.
Yeah.
When Phase One is done and you start Phase Two, you're going to return, we'll return the bond for Phase One, you'll post Phase Two. Which, if fifteen grand an acre is good, it would be on ten acres. And then the two-point whatever...
Two-point two.
Or one, yeah, two-point-two would be not bonded until they get there. And then we'd return the difference, so it'd be two-point-two acres at fifteen thousand.
But the majority of the restoration, I mean, you're going to still be going through here.
Yeah.
You're not going to be able to restore... You're not gonna be able to restore.
Well, it can be prorated based on what is.
That's why I only twenty-five percent.
But that's why it's ten acres, and that's why it's twenty-five percent, based on what Andy said.
Okay.
Yeah. That work?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
I think that works for everybody. I mean, I, I know, it's like, well, we already did it here, I know.
Trust I have that he's gonna continue to be seller for twenty-one.
And that's why you're the board.
And that's why, I mean.
I'm giving you the facts, and you're, you're making your decision.
For another, at least another twenty more years.
And we have, we have the right to make that decision.
Correct.
And I'm going to, I mean, I, I agree, if I didn't know Pine, Sand, and Stone, and the reputation they have.
That's why you're elected people.
Right, and that's why it's a deal we are, and we also know what the final game plan is. You know, I mean, so, I think it works both ways. You have to understand, you know, we need to have it for screening and spreading it, but you know the loom is gonna be there and.
Right, I'm not taking.
And even if he doesn't finish it, somebody's gonna come in and knock that mountain down.
And in the future, if somebody else comes in for gravel pit, I don't know from a hole in the wall, it's probably gonna be the thirty thousand dollars an acre that we want, 'cause I, but I'm going, I, I always base my, my decisions a lot of times on the reputation of the people I'm dealing with.
Right, I agree.
And he's been here for twenty-something years.
Right.
And we've had not any serious issues whatsoever, two minor ones maybe.
Yeah.
But it's always been taken care of, and I, and that's the way.
No, Jim's always been good to work with, I'm the first to say that.
That's.
So we're gonna keep it at the fifteen. We'll do that.
Good. All right, so we voted to close the public hearing, we voted on the waivers.
Well, the ten, and then when you go to the last.
Hundred eighty thousand.
And we'll vote.
So it's fifteen thousand per acre, hundred eighty thousand.
Fifteen thousand per acre, bonding on the next phase.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah?
Can we just make that a separate bond for the additional back, in the event we get to a place down the road?
We can.
We'd have a, we'd have a, a small piece to move, as far as the bond is concerned. If, if we have a bond now for four more acres, where instead of making it one ten-acre bond, can we?
As long as the language in the existing bond allows for transfer of, from that permit to this permit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Do you want a formal vote on the, on the bond amount, Bill, or?
You know, I mean, that, that's operational stuff, I'm not, I mean, I'm satisfied with fifteen at ten, and then how we get there is.
Okay.
It's how we get there.
All right, so the, so the, um, we need just a final approval on?
Make the motion to issue the earth removal special permit for Gilboa Street, see if Harry, John, and Pine, Sand, and Stone Company.
I'll second that one.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Can you check in to be signed if there are original ones in there? And, um.
How many years do you figure?
Three.
Three.
What is the final number?
Three, four.
Yep. What's your calling?
I'll print out, I'll print out a signature page. I'll print out a signature page, and then.
Fifty thousand or a hundred eighty thousand for the whole site.
Bill, do you need any more of these? That's about twelve acres.
You got two?
Yeah, they're gonna do ten, they're gonna do two A.
Do you have two? No?
No, I guess the other one was, I thought that was a different signature.
Here's one, I'll print out another one.
Statute of decision?
Yeah.
That kind of works.
Here's, uh. No matter what, no matter what Maria said about it. No, do you need another one?
No, two's plenty.
Not to say I was ready to second, right?
No.
Okay.
So, same routine.
Right. All right, all set?
Yeah.
All right, you guys.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you. Thanks, Ron.
All right, next item on the agenda, eight fifteen, we're going past that, so, public hearing.
I thought they requested we continue.
Yeah, are we still gonna open the public hearing tonight, Bill, on this one?
Oh, did they? No, Travis is here.
I thought that was a letter request that I could.
Oh, did they? I don't know, you guys know more than me.
I had it.
Um, yeah.
We're here.
Unless you have something that says that they can, they're opening it. Did you see this?
No, I didn't see this.
Yeah, we're here, give it to you.
What is this?
Is this the owner?
That's one of the owners.
Okay.
Yeah, so these are the.
No, this is the neighbor.
The budding pieces.
Oh, okay.
That's the neighbor.
What? That's the neighbor's letter.
That's the neighbor's comment.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Might listen for me.
Yeah, 'cause the way I said that.
Thanks, Mike.
If you read it out, right?
Okay, so we're opening this public letter. Which one are you looking at?
This one, it was at the end.
That was a letter from the neighbor above the driveway. Okay, we ready? In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty, T and eighty-one U, in the Town of Douglas Rules and Regulations governing subdivision of land in Douglas, the Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application for definitive subdivision plan. The proposed site comprises three single-family residential lots at two oh two and two oh six Maple Street, having a total area of ten point one-three acres. Property located at two oh two and two oh six Maple Street is owned by John E. and Cheryl A. Cosma. Is that Melissa? And Carolyn Cosma. The Cosma Realty Trust has shown on a residential compound definitive subdivision plan by Andrew Survey and Engineering, Inc., dated July second, two thousand and eighteen. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at eight fifteen P. M. in the municipal center, community meeting room, twenty-nine Vico Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application is available for viewing in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Junior Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open. And we just need your name and address.
Yep. Sure.
My name's Travis Brown of Andrew Survey and Engineering, here on behalf of John Cosma, who's also in attendance tonight for a property at two oh two and two oh six Maple Street. If you remember, we were in several months ago, I believe, last fall, with a preliminary plan showing you getting some input prior to an application. We've since put together an application for a residential compound definitive subdivision. A few weeks back, we had broken off this lot one, two oh two Maple Street, from this property. That's a conforming lot off Maple Street, so what we intend to do is use the remaining land here that was a part of that property, and then also this parcel here, which is two oh six Maple Street. Now, this parcel has frontage off Maple Street here. What we're looking to do is reconfigure that with a proposed right-of-way containing a common private drive.
Can you pull that over just a little bit?
Sure.
I'm gonna get a light on that ceiling.
Yeah.
So, this is the proposed what, right-of-way that we're showing. There's an existing gravel drive from Maple Street here that goes into this house, and then there's a cart path that goes back in the area where the cul-de-sac would be. So we're proposing to put a paved apron at the beginning. We have adequate site distance there, too. The existing gravel drive is about twelve feet wide, thirteen feet. We're gonna widen that to the sixteen feet required under the residential compound rules. We've shown across section detail showing that. What we intend to do, um, the road comes up a little bit, or the driveway comes up grade-wise, so there's a little bit that flows back in this direction. There's actually a low point kinda at the property line there. The rest of this property, which I can show you on a tilt-graphic sheet. So from this point here, the land slopes towards the rear, so what we're gonna do on that sixteen-foot driveway is just tilt it, so that drainage will flow off the road, and then continue down towards the back of the lot, which is all owned by Mr. Cosma. So we're proposing to add two more building lots. There's an existing house here, which will now have frontage off of this proposed right-of-way, as opposed to frontage here. There'd be a building lot here, which would have frontage along that, and then a third building lot here, hauled, which had the required two hundred feet of frontage. They're required one hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of area. So there's two new building lots, again, this one is existing. There's an existing electric line underground that will be utilized. That line runs up the edge of the driveway into a transformer in this location, so power will be served from that primary cable. We provide this one hundred-foot buffer zone here, as required in the regulations, which will not have any building or any structures, will be untouched as part of this process. So at the back, we're providing a forty-by-thirty-foot-wide turnaround area that will be within that cul-de-sac, that will allow emergency vehicles and such to be able to turn within that area. We have requested a waiver as part of this application, that waiver being the requirement for thirty feet of vegetated buffer from adjacent properties. This driveway exists now, we talked about this a little bit at that last meeting. We don't have that, it ranges anywhere from five to twenty feet, roughly in the house location, it's about fifteen. So our thoughts is to utilize that driveway, we're gonna widen it to this side away from that property line, so there'll be no more disturbance within that vegetated area, rather than try to do something other than what's already disturbed.
And that's protected to the, whether that.
That was.
See from me?
So will you be able to get written permission, that, that is, that they're granting you, that, um?
Well, I don't know if we can, I mean, we could pursue that, I think what we could do.
I think that's what we did the last time.
Well, I'm not sure that they, they may support it after conversation, but that's why the individual dropped that letter off, letting us know that he couldn't come today.
And that he was fine as long as, well, it's just brought up.
So what, you have twenty feet?
He was concerned about the screening.
Oh, so.
Yeah.
It says it had a cart lane.
It essentially exists towards the existing house that's already there, right? Cart path.
Right.
Right.
Look to widen it, they're gonna go the opposite.
The opposite away from that, huh? So there's really no substantive change once you get past, this is the house in the front, is the letter from?
It's just additional.
Yeah.
One additional lot back there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how many lots do you have here?
I think we had written on the first one, we had written correspondence.
Yeah, so there's one existing, so in addition to that, there's two new building lots.
Yeah.
It sounds like they forgot one.
Okay.
Can you read that out loud? That's all one lot.
This is all one lot, yeah. We got it. Thirty-five thousand.
It's the last change.
Well, I think he'll, he'll be at the next meeting.
That's the neighbor.
Okay, all right. And is it sixteen feet or eighteen feet?
Sixteen.
It is?
Yep. And, um.
And, uh.
Well, I've got a few comments.
Oh, okay, go for it.
When we get them, right?
Yep, okay, Bill, go ahead. Run.
Um, the plan was a little confusing to me, where you show four lots on the plan, but then you only talk about three lots in the application. The fee schedule came in with accounting for two lots, so we got some discrepancies that have to get rectified.
Yeah, we should clarify that.
That's number one. Number two, um, we didn't get any documentation on a homeowners' association, we have a whole section going over a number of requirements for a homeowners' association, and, you know, as you know, sometimes there's people that don't agree. I can think of a few residents that have come to the board about homeowners' associations.
Yes.
So we want to make sure that is in place and satisfies town council's requirements during this, this process.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the third thing that I wanted to point out was, I didn't see any kind of accommodation for drainage at the entranceway. And is there going to be anything proposed for drainage?
Uh, there wasn't anything proposed. In fact, I did look at this during some pretty significant rain yesterday, and there didn't appear to be any issues of drainage out into Maple Street, which I think is a concern and is mentioned in the regulations.
Okay, so I would suggest we get something to substantiate what you're saying. Calculations, you can demonstrate that fairly easily, I think.
Yep.
How far are you going in the asphalt?
That is forty feet long, twenty feet wide.
You're going in forty feet?
In forty feet.
Okay.
And then also, um, I think you said you needed two hundred feet of frontage, but you know you only need fifty.
Correct, if you have the two hundred, you don't need a special permit, from my understanding.
Yeah, I thought you had stated that it was two, two hundred.
It is.
So you have two hundred there, but you only need fifty?
That's correct.
Okay. What's his business with lot number one?
So lot number one was previously shown as lot number one, it was the plan that you folks had signed a few weeks ago. For consistency, I just thought I would call that lot one, two, three, and four, as opposed to having a second lot one next to it.
Okay, so what's happening? Oh.
That's out of it, that's not part of the residential compound.
So that house in the front.
But, but the application came in including that lot.
It did originally, yeah.
It did originally, yeah.
Well, even on this application, okay? So, it, it has both addresses. It says 202 and 206.
Well, technically, this is still 202, the remaining land.
So, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 lots total.
But the other one is...
I mean, again, we endorsed an A&R plan that separated that lot, okay? That plan has not yet been recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So...
Is it lost?
No, we haven't. It's just we want to be here and talk about this before we go outboard anything.
I mean, if, if it's on the plan, I've got to assess the fees for it being created as a lot and those sorts of things, which I don't think is their intention.
Yeah.
Because it's already existing.
Well, it's not existing.
Not existing, but it could be existing.
It's been approved, it's just not actually...
Not reported.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's one of the issues you gotta clear up.
Yeah, so I guess on that topic, if we can talk about the application fee. So, based on the sheet that I was provided, number of new building lots. I would argue there's two new building lots as part of this project. This is not a new building lot. It's already there.
Are you changing the lot lines on that lot?
We're changing the lot lines. It exists.
Right. If you change the lot lines, it's a lot, you're creating a lot.
Okay, so you have that fee, you have the base fee. So, the next items would be project review and inspection fee. So, again, three lots, 150, so then the fees assessed to the road length. Is that for a typical subdivision road?
Yes, this is a subdivision.
But on a conventional subdivision, that's public...
You can request a waiver from the fees.
That's what I wanted to discuss before maybe doing that.
Sure.
Is that something that the town has been, you know, amenable to, is reduction in a fee for a roadway? I mean, this is a gravel drive that's gonna remain private.
Mm-hmm. That would, that would lend some consideration, yes.
Is there a fee that's been accepted from linear foot in the past for a private gravel roadway?
I have to go look. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but...
We can research and...
But, but, I mean, I, I don't think it warrants the same level of review and scrutiny of a conventional subdivision road, yet it does require some review or inspection.
Right, exactly.
You know, they're constructing new roadway. The fire department's gonna have to access out there.
Yeah.
You know, so...
There's criteria to be met.
Quality standard that needs to be met, and there will be some cost associated with that.
I think we did that on Northeast Main, that road. We put the two houses down the back.
I don't think that ever came before us or followed through.
Well, we made a widen the road. Well, that road was already there, but unwinding it and everything, and the fire chief went out and made sure...
Oh, oh, you're talking Lake Shore.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking Lake Shore.
Cahill.
Up in Northwest Maine.
Did all that work and everything.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, it's the same thing.
But that's an existing road, yeah, but that's different, yeah.
Yeah, I guess we'd have to see an example of what we've done in the past with a gravel drive.
Yep.
So, are we in agreeance that it's three lots or four lots?
Well, this is out of it, so...
Were those lines...
I'd show that as in a butter on this plan.
What, what already said, were those lines like that's exactly already there, or was this created?
That was, this was created off pulling this piece out of it.
The prior, prior.
Correct.
There's a copy of the A&R plan in your packet.
Right, so there's three lots.
Which was the intent not to lock this into the residential compound, because now you have a 100-foot buffer, but you have existing driveway. It gets a little messy with doing it that way.
So, this is what it looks like right now. So, if you, if you get lost with the plan, then this is what it looks like at this moment.
Correct today. Yep.
That was the A&R.
And that, that brings up a whole nother question on Lot 1. If it's part of this filing, does that 100-foot vegetated strip now apply to Lot 1 as well?
Ah.
Okay? Because that's along a public way.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't, I think they would have to request a waiver from that.
They can make 100.
No, they could.
Oh.
They could, yeah.
I don't think they want to.
Yeah, the whole reasoning for that A&R was to pull it out and not, and not deal with that as part of this.
What was the reasoning for not recording it?
The reason was because I don't want to go spend the money. I don't have to if it doesn't get approved.
The recording fee of the separate lot?
Yeah, probably not.
But was already approved.
You already paid way more to get it approved.
Recording.
Than to record it.
It's the actual impact of it.
Well, yeah, what he's saying, he doesn't want to go record this, and then if this doesn't happen, then it's cut.
And have his property affected if this fails.
If he has to take, if he has to reconfigure it, if we don't approve it, he's gonna...
Why wouldn't we approve it? You know something we don't know?
No, he just, he knows, he doesn't know what we want, he doesn't know what we want to know.
I mean, I, I think it looks good. I think it's, your neighbor made a few comments that you guys are addressing, keeping all the vegetation driveway over to the one side.
Yeah, are you proposing any plantings? Are you proposing any plantings with the neighbor?
They want to leave it natural.
You had a conversation with them?
Yeah, we, we should do that.
Well, it's just between you guys, as long as they say, "Yeah, no problem," and we can grant that waiver for the buffer, for the vegetated buffer.
Yeah, we have no problem. I already planted bush, spruce trees in there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Years ago, and that's what, that's what's there now.
Do they look like this now?
Well, there's, I, I...
Oh, okay.
As long as the gypsy moss in the lawn.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
Or tornadoes.
And my biggest thing is on widening the driveway is keeping that water, any water, from going to the neighbor, to the neighbor side.
Yeah, and in fact, it's pitched.
Yeah, you got the pitch.
The other way, so we're gonna tilt that to be sure.
So, is there gonna be like country drainage or...
Yeah, I mean, really, it's what's there now. We're not changing the grade of that road other than widening it.
Yeah, so, so I want to make sure what's out there meets what the design requirement is, so when, when, when you are out there, I'll probably do some tests along the existing driveway, make sure we got the good gravel and the thickness that we need.
Yep.
And I would appreciate if you modify the detail or add a detail that shows how you're going to widen, if it's gonna be, you know, just show on the plan, cross-section in the section where the driveway is already constructed.
Okay. So, you're saying on this detail, show the existing and then just the widening?
Not necessarily on that detail, maybe even add one, because that, that's for the new road at the end.
Yep.
That's up by a cul-de-sac, right?
And then, so from station zero to whatever would be this cross-section, and then from, from there to the end would be the other.
Sure.
So, are we going with three lots now? Four?
I think, I mean, really, we're dealing with, I think, three lots. The other lot is three lots.
Well, that's, that's his call. That's the applicant's call.
Okay, well, they decided two lots. They wanted two lots.
I'm seeing contradictory things throughout the application.
Okay.
No, he said two additional. Two plus one.
I got two on the fee schedule that they submitted. I've got four on the plan and three in the narrative.
Right. I, I think we, in my opinion, the lot over on the left, that, that one's to the side. We're dealing with three here.
We got, you got three there.
Three lots that were playing with lot lines and everything else, all with frontage on, a new driveway set up and whole deal, so we're dealing with three.
You're dealing, yeah, you're creating three lots.
We're, we're dealing with three, from my eyes.
Because, Bill, could they just say that that's an existing lot, like the Lot 1, the one that he didn't record the A&R for?
Yeah, just put a note on it.
Couldn't he just say that it's existing and then you carved, like, this is kind of like the A&R versus like that one?
You can put a note on there that, you know, that's, don't call it Lot 1, but say, you know, previously endorsed A&R plan on such-and-such date or something like that.
Without filing it.
Because it's kind of like...
Well, they'd have to file it.
Well, sooner or later.
Before this plan.
Before this plan.
Before this.
Oh, then just, but he's saying he doesn't want to take that risk.
Well, they could bring both plans up there and they could...
Correct. They could be sequential.
But I'm saying, you know, like, let's just say you had the, you didn't come for the A&R plan. Let's just say he subdivided it off there and left that as our remaining lot. Didn't he need to do an A&R plan? If it, if it meets all the requirements...
From the prior filing.
No, let's just say if you had the lot as one big lot and you didn't, you did a residential compound, and you left over that lot, which is conforming, and you made the new lines, would you even have to record an A&R?
This would be, this would be no different than a typical subdivision. I would count it, just like how Sleepy Hollow did this. They had lots running on Northeast Main and on Davis Street, and we assessed them a fee because they were creating those lots as new lots.
Right, but would he have, did he have to come for an A&R plan if he just used this plan as the method to have a build of a lot?
He would have to show the rest of that Lot 1.
Yeah, there's no meets and bounds around it.
But you, okay. I don't know if I can ask in a different way.
I know what you're saying.
Did he have to have an actual A&R plan, or could he have just made an A&R lot through this method?
He could have done it through this method.
So, you had one A&R lot and three lots as a residential compound?
Correct.
Then went the other way first.
Probably he could have done this.
Then went the other way first, and that's why he's holding off and filing it, because after he did it, it's like, okay, what can we do here? Now, you're waiting to see what can be done before it's all filed.
Right, they laid out the process. They could have done it that way, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is somebody gonna tell me how many lots for this administrative fee?
No, I think it was six and one half.
The applicant's supposed to tell us. That's what Bill said.
Oh, well, well, he's supposed to ask for as many as he's creating. He's saying two, we say three, so...
Yeah, I agree, three.
Okay. You good with that? You, in the audience?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're saying three.
Yes, we're saying three.
And we're saying three, and you think that there's a length, there's a reduction in per length for this?
Right, and what I would suggest is that Travis submit justification for, for a revised fee and a waiver from the fee that's the calculated fee.
Okay, that sounds good. I, I'm, I'm good with everything.
Sounds good, yeah.
I just want to hear from the neighbor, if possible, and then the fee for length.
And, and the homeowners association stuff.
Yes.
So, in lieu of a homeowners association, a road maintenance agreement?
Yep.
Is that acceptable as alternate to a homeowners association?
No, because of plumbing and stuff.
I would run it by town council.
Right, whatever you come up with, we'll run by town council.
There's no drainage.
Yeah, there's nothing else, you know, you don't want to put a homeowners association that could potentially limit things on lots. We want all that to be worked out within that roadway, which is, I think, the intent on the regulations.
Who's gonna own the roadway ultimately?
Well, there's gonna be a maintenance agreement.
Should be undivided interest between the three lots.
That's what a homeowners does.
Yeah.
The homeowners association owns the road, is that what it is?
Right.
Has to be some absentee.
And they pay the taxes on it.
It's not the town.
Right.
Right, somebody does.
So, they separate that.
As a parcel.
And that's a separate tax bill.
And it's owned in, the homeowners association owns it and pays that.
So, round numbers or whatever.
We don't have our...
Divide it up three ways.
I'm in.
Yeah, I mean... What's that?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm ready to go to sleep.
Continue the public hearing until we get the rest of the information.
How long do you want on, um...
When's our next?
New England Realty. An hour again?
Yeah.
Okay. Eight o'clock on the 11th.
I'm sorry, did you want to go through any more of these comments? Because you just kinda, we stopped at the fees.
No.
No, I think they're fairly self-explanatory.
Okay, all right.
Those were the big ones that I mentioned.
At what time?
Eight.
So, that was the 11th meeting?
Next 7:46.
You want to be on the next meeting?
Exactly.
That's enough time.
Getting to me before...
September 11th.
Send it to town council.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to September 11th at 8:00.
But you'd still have the other thing to do.
Yeah.
I said it, we talked it all.
Seconded by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the motion carries.
You get that, you stuff all him out, the tourney's coming back.
Yeah, we'll just draft something up, give town council a chance to review it.
Yeah.
Figure out a reasonable fee. Yeah.
No, it's 11 o'clock.
Go get through it.
Right.
Yeah.
Somebody's phoned up here?
Probably. Is it fire? See who's it is.
What is it?
Is it fire?
Somebody's phone?
Aaron?
Yes.
Is that yours?
Yes. What's wrong?
That was up there.
Oh, I put it there on purpose.
Yeah, it's more...
It won't be in the way.
I don't know if it's particular standards, but some of those things, if it wasn't so big, it wouldn't be in the way on it.
We'll take that up next meeting. I do not have a report for you.
Okay, side votes.
All right. We have to, anything now?
Meeting minutes?
Yes. We have to, yeah.
I have put this draft letter in your packet. I would like your authorization to send it.
So moved.
Wait, I haven't even read it. I may, I, I've read it, but what one is this?
January 2006.
Which one is that, though?
Yes.
Wildfire Drive.
Yes.
Some, I...
Yeah, take mine already.
What is it? Oh, Wildfire, yes, I did read that, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Are we good with that? You sending that to Mr. Heaney?
I will.
All right, anything else, Bill?
Nope. Oh, wait, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wait, I, I moved the motion and we need to send it, right?
On what?
You need a motion or no?
To do what?
To send it. Did you need a motion or you want a consensus?
Um, yeah, why don't you vote?
I mean, I made a motion.
I'll second that. Oh, Mike G got it.
All right. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.